Good morning, I'd like to call this meeting to order. Today is Tuesday, February 18th, 2014. It's 9:00 AM, we're at the Palm Coast Community Center for the regularly scheduled meeting of the Palm Coast Mayor and City Council. Would you please rise and join me in a pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the law of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, roll call please.
Mayor Nets.
Here.
Vice Mayor DiLorenzo.
Here.
Councilmember Ferguson.
Here.
Councilmember Lewis.
Here.
Councilmember McGuire.
Here.
Mayor, all members are present.
Thank you. First item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes of the February 4th council meeting and the February 11th council workshop. Are there any additions, corrections, or is there a motion for approval?
Moved to approve.
Second.
Moved in second, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries without objection. Agenda item number two, second reading of an ordinance amending the official zoning map relating to Island Walk, formerly known as Palm Harbor Shopping Center. Mr. Reichman.
Mayor, Council, this is an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Palm Coast order providing for the amendment of the official zoning map as established in Section 2.06 of the City of Palm Coast Unified Land Development Code. This is amending the official zoning map for partial ID numbers 4111-31, 4975-500010, 4111-31, 4975-500020, 4111-31, 4975-500040 of the public records of Flagler County, Florida containing 28.69 more or less acres known as the Palm Harbor Shopping Center. Resoning from General Commercial, or COM2, to Master Plan Development Zoning District, or MPD, provided for conflict severability and for an effective date.
Thank you. Mr. Landon.
Mayor, City Council, this is the second reading of this ordinance. City staff is ready to go, and I think the project is ready to go, but there's, we got notified late last week from the applicant that they still have some due diligence they're working on and have asked that this be continued to your next business meeting. Mr. Shmento, representing the applicant, is here to explain a little bit further.
Council, may I just address the issue for you all? Thank you for allowing us to ask for this extension until March 4th meeting. In this kind of a complex transaction, we have the entitlement process which we're in right now in front of you in the PUD. We have closing issues, we have title issues, and we try to make them all meet in the middle. And to be very candid with you all, we're not prepared, the transaction is not prepared to move forward today. And the example I'll give you is if you look in your PUD agreement, it has the effective date issue which is subsequent to the reading or second adoption, and that's because the current owner doesn't want to be obligated to the PUD without closing, and so we need to move them succinctly together. What we're asking you guys today is to postpone this until time certain, on March 4th, we'll review for you for second reading. And if you could accommodate that request, we would greatly appreciate your help.
Thank you. Mr. Reichman, procedurally, since this was advertised as a hearing, do we receive public comment anyway, or do we simply...
Yes, Mr. Mayor, that would be appropriate. We'll be receiving public comment, and then you would, following that, you would take for consideration the applicant's request.
Thank you.
Any questions, I may be available.
Any questions for the applicant's attorney?
Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing none. Without a motion, and a second, and a vote, I can't tell you that this is going to be postponed until time certain, but my assumption is that we probably will. But meanwhile, if any of the public wish to be heard on the issue of this rezoning, please come to the podium, give us your name, and limit your contribution to three minutes. Seeing no one approach the podium, we'll assume that they're going to defer their interests as well. Back to Council, you've heard the presentation by Attorney Shmento, is there a motion relative to postponing or tabling this to time certain? March 4th was the date?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries without objection.
Mayor, just for clarification, it's March 4th at 6:30 PM in this room.
Thank you. I'll try to be there.
I don't have to stop each other.
Agenda item number three, resolution approving an interlocal agreement with the Flagler County Sheriff for Law Enforcement. Mr. Landon.
Mayor, City Council, this item, you actually, thank you. We presented to you at the time of workshop about a month ago, sheriff was not in town when we had our business meeting after that workshop, so we're trying to take action on this item today. Historically, City of Palm Coast has always contracted with Flagler County Sheriff's Office to, for law enforcement services. We have an existing contract that's really an extension of the contract with the previous sheriff, and this would update that. A lot of the provisions are the same, and what I'd like to do is just kind of highlight what, the key points and what some of the changes are. First and foremost, it outlines that the minimum of 16 sworn officers will be in the Palm Coast area without this contract, and the contract, and what the City of Palm Coast is paying for is 22 additional sworn officers. I'll get into the cost of that here in a couple of slides, but those additional officers are what we're paying for. Couple of changes that are additional levels of service that the sheriff is offering for us is currently we are paying overtime costs for our special events when we have deputies at those events. The sheriff is agreeing to not charge us that overtime any longer, and that it would just be included in our contractual agreement in costs that we contribute to the sheriff's office. Also, we currently have a portion of our after-hour calls being sent to, you call the sheriff's dispatch center, and a portion goes to a private dispatch center. It comes about because of utility, when they were private, they had their own private dispatch center for after-hours, and sheriff has agreed to have all our public works calls, including utility calls, come to one number at no additional cost for us. The other item that is additional level of service is currently our alarms at our facilities, whether that's intrusion or fire, go to a private company, and then they call the dispatch, and we are, have agreed, the sheriff has agreed to have those calls go directly to central dispatch, saving us dollars, having it be more efficient, a little quicker response. Couple of positive things that we've added. One of the key functions of, for us, has always been having the position of a coordinator so that when we had specific issues, we had a go-to person, that has been Commander Mark Carman for a number of years now, and this contract just outlines that if that was to ever be proposed to change, that the sheriff would have to meet with the city manager and discuss those issues or changes. If, and Mark, I'm sure you agree, heaven forbid, there's ever vacancy there, we agree that the city representatives would be involved in the interview and the selection. Ultimately, that is the sheriff's responsibility, that position reports to the sheriff, and needs to be under the sheriff's ultimate control, but with input from city manager, and therefore city council also, is what we've outlined in the agreement. The cost, this is also very positive, the agreement calls for no increase, this is going to be, we've had no increase in our cost for the law enforcement services since October 2009. The proposal is that that would continue until next fiscal year, so on October 1, 2014, it would go up less than 1%, about $24,000. Still, 1% increase is a minimal increase. This also includes the school resource officer, which I'll talk about here. So our cost currently is just under 26, $2,600,000, and in 2014, it will go up to a little over $2,600,000. Subsequent years, right now, the agreement says it can increase up to as much as 6% based on actual cost. Sheriff has agreed to put a cap of 3%, so another positive change for us. And then the contract does have, it's a four-year contract, there's only basically three years left in it, expires January of 2017, which is concurrent with the term for the elected position. There's actually two items on your agenda, they're both related. The second item is a three-way contract with the city, sheriff, and the school district. This is for school resource officers. There are currently six, and the agreement stays the same, the city, there's no changes. This is reconfirms what we currently have in place. In essence, we pay for one additional deputy that is a school resource officer, and then the agreement outlines that when they are not in the schools during summer, during break time, they are in the neighborhoods working on youth-related crime prevention and enforcement. It is, I know from experience, with other police departments, many of the school resource officers are able to intervene in conflicts before they actually occur. It's really a good program for the neighborhoods also, so really support this. That is, end of the presentation. Once again, it maintains what we have with some enhancements and at no additional cost at this time, with a small increase come at the end of the fiscal year. Sheriff Manfree is here, and I know he's, would like to say a few words, and Mayor, that's all I have, but I would encourage you to turn it over, Sheriff, ma'am.
Sheriff, the microphone is yours.
Good morning, Mayor, fellow city council members and city manager. As we know, we're talking about a contract, but what a contract does is create a relationship, and the effectiveness of a contract is really based on that relationship. And I'd like to report that I believe the relationship between the Flagler County Sheriff's Office and the City of Palm Coast cannot be better. We meet the city manager on a monthly basis to talk over issues. That doesn't mean we don't have communication if there's an issue that pops up before. As you know, I'm available to each one of you 24 hours, seven days a week, if there's an issue that I need to be involved with. We have just a great relationship with your city fire department, and obviously, I could tell you these things, but you saw them be executed very rapidly during the tornado, the evacuation during the Christmas parade, and then the response to the tornado. That relationship really helped in an immediate response to the issues that that tornado involved. And I would like to commend Chief Mike Beadle. He is, and I've told him personally, I know he's not here in the room, but I'll make sure he knows at the Rotary Club this afternoon, he's the best fire chief I've ever worked with. We have a lot of media issues on our plate. We're about to talk about replacing our radio system and our CAD system over the next three to five years, and we've made a commitment to the city that all of their users will be at the table when those decisions are made, because they will affect the city fire department as one of our major users of our system. In addition, we have a monthly meeting, actually not a monthly, a weekly meeting with all of the fire chiefs throughout the county, which my under sheriff attends. So if there are any issues that come up, we're on them right away. In addition, as you know, I've given an award to Tony Capella, I don't know if he's in the room, but that department has been key to us in not only creating what I think is really a first-class precinct here in the, right here in the city marketplace, but also the additional detective space that we utilize provides great service to our citizens. And it's a professional-looking place, and it's a place that people are encouraged to come to, and I believe Commander Carmen has told me that we've almost tripled the amount of walk-ins that we receive. We also have a records clerk there, so our people do not have, our citizens do not have to come up to Bonnell to get records that they may need, accident reports and things like that. I'd also like to commend Commander Carmen, he does a great job here for us, as you know, he's been doing this for many years, and his enthusiasm never flags, which is an incredible thing. He really cares about this community, and as you know, I've set out for myself, as one of our key items is customer service. That's what I believe the sheriff's office is giving, not law enforcement services, but customer service, and he certainly, I think, lives and breathes that each and every day. We have, and I can go through a lot of the key things, but I just want to tell you about a couple of things I brought the city manager up to, I think are going to help in terms of law enforcement services in the city. One of our major challenges in this community and throughout this country is the issue of mental health. We have become law enforcement the default provider of mental health care, which is not what our deputies are trained to do, but because there is no other, really, infrastructure, we have to do that. So what that means is that, we just did a, just a snapshot, in one month, we had 46 Baker Acts. In one month, we have seen a 30% increase over the past three years of Baker Acts on a yearly basis. And what that means is that when we respond to an incident where there's a potential for a mental health issue, our deputies have to evaluate it, determine whether it meets the Baker Act criteria, they then have to transport that person to Daytona, to Halifax, which is the receiving area, and sometimes that can take two to three hours if there's a backup. So you have a deputy with the travel time out at least an hour, and with the additional time to get services of maybe two to three hours. So what we have done, and that impacts Flagler, the City of Palm Coast, where probably 80% of those incidents occur. So what we have just done is applied for a grant, and we've been successful, and this program will start March 1st, where we have entered an agreement with Stuart Marchman. Now, Stuart Marchman in Daytona is the ultimate place where Baker Acts are actually given whatever treatment they need. So they go to Halifax and then to Stuart Marchman. So what this grant does is cut that middleman out. We take them now to the Stuart Marchman Center in Bonnell, right next to the sheriff's office, if we believe they have Baker Act criteria. They then triage that person, rather than a deputy, they determine whether this person needs to be looked at for the period, for the 48-hour period. If they determine that's not the case, they will give that person whatever appropriate treatment they need. If they do, they will transport this, the person, to their facility in Daytona. So we are now, that resource will now provide us additional manpower that we, otherwise we'd lose in these, in the transport of these Baker Acts. So I think that's really significant, and I will tell you, and Commander Carmen I'm sure will let you know, these things don't come one a day. I mean, you'll get three in one day, so you can have three or potentially four officers out of the county dealing with these issues. And as you can imagine, most of these things occur on the weekends because that's when people get together and things happen. So I think that's a tremendous asset that we'll be able to provide to the city. The last thing I will just talk about is our recent grant you may have read about is, we got a grant, a DUI grant. DUIs are the bane of every community's existence, and we've seen a steady increase in DUI-related accidents in this community. So that grant allows us to have, put five deputies at a time, and sort of a wolf pack in the community. Again, because most of the traffic is here in Palm Coast, you'll see most of those events occur here, although it's a county-wide effort. This past weekend, we had tremendous results, a lot of stops, and I will tell you, not every stop relates to a ticket. Sometimes it's just a warning, explaining to people what it is they were doing wrong, and hopefully they're not, will not recommit. Some of them were tickets, 6 DUI arrests, some narcotics arrests, so it was, I think, a very effective program which we will continue. That's a three-year grant, so you'll be seeing the results of that through Commander Carmen's statistics to the city. So I believe we provide extraordinary services to the city at a, at a very competitive rate, and I believe this agreement is in the interest of the citizens of Palm Coast. I appreciate all the efforts of the city manager in negotiating this, and I look forward to continuing our relationship. Thank you.
Just an observation, you said your DUI group has five officers, and you call them a wolf pack?
Yes.
If you added a sixth officer, you'd call them a six-pack.
Oh, gosh.
Counsel comments. Mr. McGuire.
I hate to have to come in behind it.
Sorry about that.
Sheriff Manfree, you're talking about Baker Act and the ability of a deputy to determine whether or not a citizen shows reasonable cause to have to be Baker acted. We have an aging population in the City of Palm Coast, a lot of what people would be considered mentally deficient is relative to their age. Do you consider that the sheriff's actions to be a stopgap until a stronger measure can be put in place? Because I, I just don't know if it's fair to expect a deputy to conduct a psychiatric evaluation of somebody that they've apprehended. What's the big picture? What's down the road for, for people that look like they're candidates for being Baker acted? I'd be interested in your opinion.
We, I mean, we use, obviously the deputies use their discretion, and they have a lot of experience at this. This is not a new task for deputies or law enforcement. They don't, they take this very seriously, so they don't Baker Act unless all the criteria is there. I would say, maybe, half of our responses have something to do with some sort of disturbance that's occurring inside the home. And without getting Freudian here, certainly over the last three years, we have seen a lot of pressure on the family units inside the city. So it results in these kind of acts. So they use that discretion very carefully, and they only Baker Act when they deem there's no other possibility. Sometimes, like you indicated, it, you realize it may be dementia, Alzheimer's, or some other things going on, drug addiction or alcoholism, which is not fit to Baker Act criteria. One of the, I believe this particular program is really something that should be replicated nationwide, because as you indicated, deputies are not psychiatrists. We should have mental health professionals making those calls, that in case a deputy misidentifies what the condition is, a mental health professional who's trained in this may identify something else that's going on that doesn't require them to be isolated for the, for the period, so.
My concern, Sheriff, is that, is that with the population continuing to age, and you know, the baby boomers are getting, as I am, older every day, do you envision that the sheriff's office might be overwhelmed at some point in time with having to deal with, with patients that suffer from dementia and create a problem in society?
I don't see, I don't see the, I think we have had an aging population, our deputies are very experienced at dealing with them. Most of them have aging parents here in this community, so they relate very well to it. It's something we talk about. So I don't see it being overwhelming, but I do think that we're going to have to continue as a community to talk about these mental health issues in a greater amount, not just here, but throughout the country, because the entire population is aging, and they are staying alive much later into their 90s. So it is going to be an issue that we're going to have to talk about, and I think the state is going to have to weigh in on this and provide some relief to communities on these mental health issues, which they really have abrogated, not only here in Florida, but throughout the country. They've abrogated this, these issues. In some places, like Orlando, and this may be a next step, is creating mental health courts. Because so many, so much crime is related to mental health issues, they have created separate mental health courts, where basically those courts are, oversee people who are not taking their medications or aren't getting, receiving proper treatment, and order those people into them, as opposed to into our jail facilities, which is not, our jail facilities are not a place where people get competent treatment for these kind of diseases. So that's, I think, a step that we've talked about inside the circuit, about a mental health court, where you have a judge who's specially trained in healthcare professionals who can deal with these cases rather than criminalize them.
Thank you. Mr. Lewis.
Two things, Sheriff, what you're, you're just getting into about the court and the application of the court system to mental health, and as you know, that's a tremendous discussion throughout the country today, is what do we do with mental health? And not because, only because of the aging population, but because we have so many servicemen coming back with mental problems, and, and they are being treated, in some cases, as criminals, and being incarcerated. So I think it's, it's not your purpose or responsibility to address that issue all by yourself. I think it's, we need all of the agencies to get involved, mental health, the county and the state, and all of those. But it, it does mean, to me, it means that the emphasis right now is, is on your department to carry the ball, and I think that's unfair, because that's not what you're out or trained to do. Mental health is, is a medical problem to some degree, and should be handled by the mental health. I don't know how we're going to deal with it in Palm Coast, because we have a combination of veterans and older people, so, but that's one thing. The other thing is, Palm Coast is a beautiful place to live, and a lot of people come to Palm Coast to live under various conditions, including vagrants, and we are getting more and more vagrants coming into Palm Coast to live because it's a beautiful place. So I don't know how that's being treated by your department. Could you address that?
Sure. Just to talk about the first issue, we have, we've addressed that in our command staff about the issue of veterans. It hasn't really impacted our community as much as some others, but again, the courts are trying to not use incarceration as the first line of defense when it deals with veterans' issues, when they act out because of post-traumatic stress syndromes or other issues that they have. So they're actually talking about veterans' courts, another court that they, where a court within a court, where you'd address those veterans' issues and get the federal government involved to make sure our veterans are getting all the care that they, they have, deserve based on their service to our country. As far as the homeless population, it ebbs and flows, as you know, depending on the time of year. Certainly this time of year, and with the cold weather, you know, homeless people will come into Florida and look for a warmer place to play, to live. For those of us who have been in a bike patrol up and down our corridor, they live inside this corridor, it's hard to believe, but they, they do live inside of our wooded areas on, on the Palm Coast Parkway Corridor, and I've seen it for myself, little tent cities that are, that are erected. Our job is to sort of move them along so they don't stay there permanently and become a nuisance to, to the neighbors. It is a difficult problem, because when you talk about homelessness, there's really three types of people. There are people who are literally economically homeless, they have no money, they've ran out of money, they have nowhere to live, or they've been thrown out of their home for different issues. There are those who are psychiatric, people who are homeless because they have mental health issues, and this is where they've wound up, because there's nothing, they don't have the money to be in a proper facility. And the third, although it's hard to believe, there are people who choose to live outside, and I've talked to some of them. It's, it's, whatever it is their lifestyle, maybe it is a form of mental illness, but they choose to live outside. We've talked about it on a county basis in our Public Safety Commission meeting, which I encourage a representative from the city to attend from time to time, where we get all of the players in the system, from probation to county administration, to state attorney's office, to talk about these issues. And my proposal, and it's starting to come to fruition, is that we have a faith-based initiative on this, something that the taxpayers don't have to pay for, and it's been done in other states, where we go from an incarceration point of view to a recovery point of view. Not every person deserves to be in jail, some do. There's some persistent violators have to be in jail, and we need to keep them there as long as we can to protect the community. But there's these other groups of people, whether they're homeless, who wind up in our jails, or veterans, or alcoholics, or mentally ill... as long as we can to protect the community. But there's these other groups of people, whether they're homeless, who wind up in our jails, or veterans, or alcoholics, or mentally ill, who don't want, don't deserve to be in jail, because we can help them. Jail is like a hospital emergency room waiting room. You sit there, but you don't get treated. So, we've talked about a faith-based initiative, which would be, which is now being started in the city of Anell without some issues there, but it's been started by Pastor Solano, where the faith-based community is starting an alcohol recovery program, and eventually, hopefully, will divert some of our prisoners into this program. And we've talked about that program also being expanded into transitional housing, where when people come out of jail and have nowhere to live, guess what they're going to be doing? And also, this homeless population, which sometime is our prisoners who come out and have no place to go. So, there is a potential fix. It's a long-term fix. I've been dealing with the faith-based community, encouraging them to get together and take pieces of this, and perhaps that's one way to deal with this, you know, this persistent problem of homelessness. I think that's a better way of doing it than the state intervening, because I think they have something more to offer than the state does, which is just treatment. I think there's something more that they need, and I think the faith-based community provides that.
Absolutely.
And it's been very successful in other communities, by the way.
Exactly. And there are, in some states, they have even gone into a housing program where they have had facilities donated by residents or citizens to get the people off the streets, given them apartments and that sort of thing, but there are rules and regulations that they have to follow. Some people can, some people can't, but there are many, many programs that are being introduced now. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Lorenzo.
Just a couple of comments, Sheriff. I want to thank you for your improved, the agency's improved communication and cooperation with the city. I think our, the relationship has really blossomed. I can see it. It's easy to see how focused you are on Palm Coast, and I appreciate it. And also, your commitment to community policing. I think I've mentioned this one-on-one with you before, that when I was a kid, you would have, the police officer would come up to your street, and you'd be outside, and he'd stop and chat with you for a little while and move on, and I see the deputies in my community regularly. A couple of times a week, I'll see them cruising, you know, through the community, and I think that that presence makes a real difference for citizens. It gives them a higher comfort level, and I think also it's good for children to see the officers out in the community, and I just like that approach. I know that's been a focus of yours, and I appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you, counsel.
Sheriff, just to kind of repay the compliment, you were unable to attend the firefighters' award dinner Saturday night. Captain Carmen, Commander Carmen did a great job representing you, but the chief was there and expressed all kinds of accolades for the sheriff's department, their wonderful support during the Starlight tornado. So, just really great job, and we appreciate you, and I hope you appreciate us. On this issue of homelessness, veterans specifically, I was going to save this for later in the agenda, but Virginia, perhaps you could get from Kendra a letter that I signed yesterday, just for your information. The Veterans Affairs has a $3 million grant for addressing the issue of hunger and homelessness among veterans, returning veterans, for Volusia Flagler County, and I've written a letter of support on behalf of the city endorsing some of our local groups that are applying for a portion of that grant. The issue of homelessness, returning veterans, PTSD, it's a complex issue, and there is no simple solution. It will be a problem that will be nibbled at from many different directions, and I'm just happy that the city is able to support some local groups that are looking to do their part. So, thank you for your attention to that issue.
If I may just comment, I apologize for not making that Fireman's Award Dinner. And just so you know, we, both myself and the other sheriff, were in Orange County at the funeral services for an Orange County deputy. And again, it just points out to me, whenever I attend these funerals, and I do each and every one that occurs inside of the state, simply because I've been through it myself, is the job that our deputies do under very difficult circumstances, they make it look easy. But let me tell you, it's a very difficult job. It's shift work, it's working weekends, and you never know when that shift is your last. So, I'd like to commend all of the deputies and all law enforcement for their commitment to the community. They do an incredible job.
At this point, we can open the meeting to the public. There are two issues involving sheriff's contract. There's the interlocal agreement for the contract, and then there's the secondary issue of the three-party agreement for school resource officers. I'll accept comments on either or both, but we will deal with them separately from the council perspective. Anyone wish to be heard on Agenda Item Number Three?
Four.
Or four.
Louis McCarthy, Palm Coast. I just have one thing, and it's dear to me, is training. Particularly in schools, which requires a specialized training, has that increased? Have you changed, or, you know, particularly, you know, because you just can't put any deputy in schools for that, for that purpose. Thank you.
Get an answer to your question. Next speaker.
Jack Kyle, Palm Coast. We have, the sheriff has given us 16 deputies. That's free.
Oh, I wish that were true.
Well, it comes out of, it comes out of the county money.
Yes.
And then, then we're paying for 22 additional deputies. Do you realize that there are 70,000 people in Palm Coast? That makes one deputy for every, for every, for every 4,000 people, every 6,000 people. If you add the 22, it's one deputy for every 4,000 people. That doesn't make, it doesn't sit too well, you know, having one cop, one deputy, to take care of 4,000 people. I know what you're going to say, you know, you've got areas that don't require a cop or a deputy, but I, I'm living there 15 years, 16 years, and I have yet to see a deputy come down my street once. I haven't a deputy come down anywhere in my neighborhood once. So, I'm paying for nothing.
Next speaker. Signal and approach the podium. I'll close the public portion. I mean, get back to council, but first, Sheriff, special training for school resource officers.
Well, I think there's two, two things I'd like to comment about that. To me, the school resource officer program is the foundation of everything we do. Most of our nuisance crime are youth-related crimes. So, what the school resource officer department does is provides intelligence. I mean, you have five days a week for 40 hours a week, the kids, the 12- to 18-year-olds who are going to commit some of the mayhem in our community. So, what they do is create relationships with youngsters, and hopefully, they can interdict some of that behavior. But the way, first of all, I think it starts at the top. You have to believe in the program, which I do. I still have a child in the high school, so it's very important to me. But what we do is we select SROs who specifically want to be into this program, and they go through a vetting program before they get in. They have to show some sort of affinity towards kids. And we also have the principals. I've had this conversation with past superintendent John Valentine, and I've had it with Jacob Lieber, the incoming superintendent, that I want the principals to be involved in this process. If they feel that their school resource officer is not up to par, they can call me, and we will have a conversation. We've just done that recently in one of our schools this past year. So, we believe in it strongly. We train them, they go to a week program every year on training. But beyond that, and this is a very timely issue, we have just gotten a new EOC director, Kevin Guthrie. And one of my big initiatives this year was additional training in the schools. When I walked in the door, we had just encountered Sandy Hook. So, we needed to have some active shooter training, which we have not had in how long, Commander Carmen?
It's been quite a few years, but to touch on what the sheriff, and I was going to quote on this, just last week with Kevin Guthrie, we had all the schools, school resource officers, and quite a few deputies, we've had two training sessions already on active shooting, and each principal was involved. We had it at Rimfire just last week, and each SRO in, representing each of his schools was there. I was there along with Chief Beetle, Kevin Guthrie. All our commanders were there, our SWAT members were there, so we all got together, and we got more coming. Kevin and Chief Beetle himself, we've got, we're going to keep this going for as long as we can. So, it was some good training, some good information, and we got to go, I got to know principals I didn't know, Chief Beetle's got to know ones he didn't know. It was a good working relationship. To answer the sheriff's question, I think the last time I had an active shooting scenario was over four years ago.
And what we, with the training programs, whether it's active shooter or any of the programs in school, just like community-oriented policing, what you try to do is, you know, there's only five SROs, six SROs, there's a supervisor who in the schools, and you have 12,000 students. So, again, the ratio isn't great. But what you try to do is invest everybody in this process. It can't just be law enforcement's, you know, responsibility here. So, what we've done is trained the principals and staff that they have some responsibility until we can respond, because what we've learned, unfortunately, from all of these incidents, whether it's Aurora or Sandy Hook, is that when you have an active shooter, sitting there and doing nothing is not the right response. Because when you're fleeing, the ability to shoot someone who's fleeing is much less than if you're sitting there waiting for the bullet to come. So, the new training that we're, that we're training is, if someone comes into your classroom, throw things at them, run at them, don't just be a passive participant. So, that's part of the training, is to get everyone involved in it, not just law enforcement. And just to, if you don't mind, Mayor, I'd like to just respond to what Mr. Carroll said, is the same issue, is that he's absolutely right. The national ratio is 2.5 deputies per thousand. I'm sorry, that's the, that's recommended. It's actually, the average is 2.1. We're at 1.3 in this county, and that's simply because of the economic downturn. We have not been able to add deputies for three to four years, and that has to change. But the way we respond to that is community-oriented policing, trying to invest everybody in the responsibility that you have a responsibility to protect your neighborhood. If something's going on, let us know. We can't be everywhere at every time. But if we get everyone involved in this and make people feel they're responsible, then we have a better chance. And our PSAs, which I think are very helpful, people tell me all the time, are those sort of indicators. Don't leave your car unlocked at night with valuables in it, because, believe me, kids know where it is, and they're looking into cars. So, we'll see car burglaries three or four in a row one night, and so we go into that community and knock on doors and say, you know, this is the way not to be, you know, have a crime committed against you. Don't do that. So, we need to have a community-wide investment in public safety, and especially in the schools as well.
And to answer Jack's question, Jack, I came by your house one day, you weren't home. At the city manager's request, because we weren't at a council meeting for a couple of times. So, I've been by. To respond on that, what the sheriff's saying is, yeah, we do handle a lot of calls in Palm Coast. Seventy-seven percent of the calls for service in the county are in Palm Coast, which last year amounted to over 80,000 calls for service in Palm Coast alone. So, and when the sheriff's, you know, when he's saying you're getting a certain amount of deputies, you're getting more than that. That's what we're paying, you know, you're paying for, but at any given time, when you count the, what is it, 38, you're still, you know, I wrote out a list of, you know, we all know the Marine Patrol, K-9, traffic, the investigators, and there's more than 38 men out. So, it, you know, right now, there's at least nine men in Palm Coast, not counting your school resource officers, your detectives, your narcotics officers. So, 38 is like the bare minimum when we're talking about something like that. I just, I just want to make that clear.
The metric, of course, is not how many deputies per square mile or per thousand population. The metric is crime rate compared to comparable cities, and all the statistics that I've seen are very positive, that either we've got primarily law-abiding citizens, or we've got very effective sheriff's deputies, or a combination thereof, but you could always use more. It becomes a question of allocation of resources.
If I could touch on that, Mayor, the sheriff supplements that with our COP program, and I got to, I guess, be remiss if we didn't compliment them, which is head up by Major Byrne. I looked up their statistics for the, now at the end of the year 2013, and they put in over 30,000 volunteer hours. That's quite impressive, if you ask me. And some of the things they did was, Mayor, one of your favorite programs is the Star of Approval, Home, you know, Target Harden, and we did 106 of them last year. We went out to the home show, Sheriff, and tried to promote it more, so we have more to, to help lower the burglary rate. They helped us with traffic crashes, 256 traffic crashes, where they can do the crashes when there's, you know, non-injury, non-criminal, and they might offend offenders and stuff that leaves the deputies on the road. To try and help out vacation watches, you know, Dark House, whatever, we used to call them a Dark House book, Vacation, You Go on Vacation. We did over 250 of them, white people away. One of the things they did were funeral escorts. They did 51 funeral escorts, and I don't know if anybody's had a family member pass away, and the, I wouldn't say pride, but the appreciation you get when you get escorted by, most police departments don't do that anymore. So, you're on your own. But if you have a funeral procession, you're escorted there. It's a good feeling at a really hard time. So, I have to give my hats off to them, and the sheriff giving us some resources with the COPs who work out of the precinct.
And just to add to that, I mean, we can go on and on. We do have a six-man narcotic unit that is assigned here. We have a undercover operation, we have a five-man undercover operation. So, there are at least seven or eight special units that are in addition to the basic service that you get, that, again, concentrates generally in Palm Coast, because that's where the major incidents are. So, those are the other services that you don't see that get paid for with county dollars.
Back to council. Additional questions, comments, or a motion on Agenda Item Number Three? Moved to approve.
Second.
Moved in second, and all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries out of objection. Agenda Item Number Four, continuation of this discussion. This is the three-party interlocal agreement between the sheriff's department, the city, and the school board. I don't suppose any additional presentation. Any council questions on that issue? Mr. Maguire.
Does the school board, and I don't know who to address this question to, there are charter schools. Not every school has an SRO. How do you determine which school should have one and which school should not?
I'm going to defer that to the sheriff, because that's really an agreement between the sheriff's office and the school district.
Well, the school district is paying for, right now, there's four, five deputies. So, we haven't had that discussion with charter schools directly. We've sort of talked about it, Superintendent Valentine and I had discussed it, and she was going to, they are the liaison to the charter schools, and we have made ourselves available. If they decide that they want a deputy, they would have to pay for it, like the school would have to pay for it. I think the only school that probably is maybe reaching that point of view is Imagine. Most of the charter schools are K to six. Imagine, I think, now has a, goes to K to eight, so that may be an issue that they're going to be dealing with as their population increases. But I've been asked directly to provide SRO services to a charter school.
Continuing that line, Sheriff, John Winston has a highly successful, in my opinion, mentoring program with youth in the, in the school district. Does the sheriff's office have any liaison to that?
Yes. Corporal Apison is the liaison to that. In fact, I've spoken to that group twice now. We encourage what they do. It's a tremendous program to provide that mentorship to young adults. So, I've had many conversations with John about his program, and our deputies are, you know, are their advisor. Corporal Apison attends their meetings in case they have any questions.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes. One question. In the schools, where
Yes, one question, in the schools where the officers, officers are, are there any provisions for the officers giving training to the students, or as a, like a classroom program?
Yeah, they, there are several programs that they have, there's a modification of the DARE program, that's, has sort of worked its way out, we have a, a drug education program that we talk to the kids about, our school resource officer are in the middle schools and the high schools, so they have programs inside those schools that, that they, that they bring to the students, but to be honest with you, I, I think it's really the personal relationships that really are, that make them most effective, but yes, there are programs that, that we use, we also have other outside programs that we use, stranger danger programs that we coordinate with, and we have the Sheriff's PAL program, which we try to encourage kids to do something after school in our programs, which we've expanded greatly over this past year.
Let me just ask one more question about the PAL program, is that an active program in Palm Coast to, to the point where students are directed, or kids are directed to that program?
Well, they're directed inside the school, we work with the city's Parks and Recreation Program to make sure that we're only going into programs that the city or some other organization is not already doing, so we don't want to compete with anyone, I believe we have a, it's a countywide, a monthly meeting, is that correct, with all of the sports groups, I think the city coordinates that, Luanne does, just to make sure that we're all coordinating what we're doing, yeah, we, we have an outreach program that is SROs, sort of try to identify kids who may be, who may need some extracurricular activity, we provide, PAL does, through the sheriff's forfeiture fund, we provide scholarships to kids who otherwise could not afford to be in our programs, because some of them can be expensive, so, and also, we've, this, this year, we had a partnership with the YMCA, we had Dust with Deputy programs at Ralph Carter Park, where deputies went out and played basketball, encouraged kids, that was enormously successful, so even after school, in the summer months, we try to promote those programs, and I told the city manager, our deputies are available for your summer programs, if you want them to come in and do any sort of educational programs, we made them available, so.
Excellent, thank you. Okay, I will open the meeting to the public, if any of the public wish to be heard on agenda item number four, this is the school resource officer contract, sign on approach to the podium, we'll close the public portion meeting, come back to council, additional questions, comments, or a motion?
Moved to approve.
Second.
Moved in second, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries out objection. This brings us to the consent portion of the agenda, there are only two items on the consent agenda, item five is a work order for engineering the next bridge rehabilitation, item six is piggyback contract purchase protective equipment for the fire department, and if any of the public wish to be heard on either of the consent agenda items, sign on approach to the podium, we'll close the public portion meeting, come back to council, is there a motion, does anyone wish to remove anything from the consent agenda? Is there a motion to approve, to approve the consent agenda as presented?
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries out objection. This brings us to the public participation portion of the meeting, you're appearing to speak on anything not on today's agenda, please come up to the podium, give us your name, and limit your contribution to three minutes.
John Erpelding, our section, I've got a couple of things that I want to bring up, but I'm going to try and get through them real quick, one of them, my neighbor takes care of his home, beautiful home, beautiful yard, he had a dead tree, a small dead tree in the front of his house, and he decided to cut it down, well, what he did was he took the branches and the, and the stuff and threw them in the empty lot next door, now, within a matter of hours, code enforcement was there slapping a violation on his garage, I understand it's against the code and all of that, but code enforcement has yet to ever say anything about the half-ton of trash that is in those same fields, in those other yards, that seems to me to be a little bit stupid, of course, I'm going to get back to the red light cameras, because I understand that just this last week, the legislature, the state legislature has come up with their determinations that the red light cameras have absolutely nothing to do with safety, they have said that they've cut down deaths, but increased accidents, well, they haven't cut down deaths because a guy drunk driver running a red light makes no difference, he's not shading a light, but the other ones have increased side swipe and rear-end accidents, now, my, in complaints with the red light cameras, our city manager's answer in the paper last week was, rather than have the red light cameras, what would you have us do, have the police do that job, police the red lights, duh, yeah, I'd like to have the police, I don't believe in the, in the RoboCops, last but not least, I'm going to ask one more time, and I've asked this before, in your city charter, the limitations to council's contracting authority, unless authorized by the electors of the city at a duly-held referendum election, the city shall not enter any, enter into any lease purchase contracts or any other unfunded multi-year contracts, the repayment of which extends in excess of 36 months or exceeds $15 million, now, my question on that is, going back to the red light cameras, who signed the contract, when was the contract signed for the red light cameras, and by whose authority, now, maybe you could answer that, because by your own city charter, you don't even give the good Lord the authority to sign a contract for over three months without going to the electorate, I'd like to have those answers, thanks.
Thank you, next speaker.
I'm Don McBride from Palm Coast, my question being today is in regards to the signs people put out for yard sales, the code enforcement, I mean, instead of having these guys go around on weekends and work the weekends, and, and basically, and I have a young son, or I had a young son, that we had some signs put out, and code enforcement took them, and he questioned me, who stole our signs, and I had to tell him, well, the city took them, you know, and it looks like to me that, and I'm getting ready to have a sale, I called the penny saver, and they told me, you need to call the city and let them know that you're having a sale, register it with them, they told me you're allowed to put one sign out in your yard, you can't put anything anywhere else, if you register with the city, instead of sending some guy around, paying him to work the weekends, and, and take the signs, why not have him go around on Monday morning, and if there's a sign, a sign still hanging, you put down that address and everything else, and you fine the people for not picking them up, that seems like you're not paying him for to work the weekends, and plus, the city makes money on people not picking up their trash, the other thing is, is I don't understand, whenever we have an election, you guys put signs all over the city and the county, and you're allowed to leave them out there for the whole time the election's going on, but if someone sticks a yard sale next to it, they're going to come by and take that one, I don't understand that, so if someone could answer that for me.
Yes, sir, we'll get you an answer, next speaker.
Louis McCarthy, Palm Coast, I just want to know, how is things going in Seminole Woods Parkway, I see the Florida Power and Light, looks like they attempting to move poles, I just hope so they do it with a lot less flair than the fires, thank you.
Next speaker.
Jack Kyle, Palm Coast, I just bought 10 trees from the, the people that sell, you know, to this organization, we send them $10, they send you 10 trees, can I plant that 10 trees on my property, and do I need a special permit for each tree?
We'll get you an answer, next speaker, next speaker, sign on approach to the podium, we'll close the public portion meeting, come back to council, but first, question was raised about authorization to enter into contracts, the charter does specifically limit council from entering into any contract that exceeds $15 million, three years, unfunded contracts, and then the specific was, who, how, did we enter into a contract with ATS for the red light cameras, how does that square with the charter prohibition?
Well, I'm going to take a stab at it first, and then let the attorney address, if, I don't cover all the points, but it's, it's very specific in the charter, has to do with when we enter into a contract that's a lease purchase, in other words, it's, it's a debt obligation over those limits, with the agreement for the red light camera program, we don't have any, any debt, we don't have any costs associated with it, they put the cameras up without any cost to the taxpayer, and, and obviously, there is revenue, most of it going to the state, then ATS gets their portion, and then we get $700 per camera, so it doesn't fit under that provision, because it is not a cost, and it's not the debt over the three-year period, when it comes to a lease, and, and you know, even when we do, we lease copiers, et cetera, we always, they always want four years, we always tell them it has to be three years, as per the charter, but that is a financial obligation for us to pay versus something that someone pays us.
The issue of yard sale signs, that has been a perpetual issue in Palm Coast for as long as I've been on city council, it has always been the, the decision of city council that our city is more beautiful without proliferation of signs, Mr. Reishman, would you specifically address the issue of election signs, one of the criteria for placing an election sign is it has to be placed, placed on private property, it cannot be placed in the city right-of-way, and the city will take down election signs if they are in the city right-of-way, all election signs are supposed to be placed on private property with the permission of the private property owner, Mr. Reishman, anything you want to add to that?
Well, just generally speaking, all, all of our sign regulations, and if you look in our Code of Wardens under garage sales, there's regulations, and we, we revised this ordinance not that long ago regarding garage sales, but the, the section in our Code of Wardens regarding garage sales says to look to the land development code for any sign regulations pertaining to garage sales, so there is one chapter in our land development code that regulates signs, signs are regulated based upon time, place, and manner, and not content, and yes, Mr. Mayor, that is, you are exactly correct, with regard to the regulation of political signs, those have to be kept on private property, and the code enforcement officials will go out and will remove those signs if they're on public property, there is specific federal and state case law that has come out with regard to placing limitations on how local governments can regulate the timing of regulations for political signs, specific federal and state cases, where, for example, if you wished to place a regulation on the placement of political signs, that they could not be put up more than a week before an election, and had to be taken down within 24 hours after an election, those types of restrictions have been found to be unconstitutional, violating the freedom of speech, so on top of the, the general constitutional requirement that sign regulations be content-neutral, time, place, and manner, there's an additional layer of federal law, case law, that talks about political signs specifically, so yes, Mr. Mayor, but your, your comment regarding private versus public property is absolutely correct.
Mayor, if I could add, when I first came here, we tried the weekend approach of just going out Monday, and, and my goodness, the, the amount of signs in the, in the right-of-way and the medians, it just went crazy by a lot of different, different people, also want to reiterate, because I know that's the perception, is that we will not pick up political signs, we do pick up political signs if they're in private, if they're on public property, the same concept, if the gentleman would like to talk to his son, is that if someone put a sign in your, on your property, you are welcome to pick that sign out for your property and put it in the dumpster, same thing, if you put a sign on somebody else's property, including city property, then the city has the ability to pick that sign up off of city property, we do not have a code officer that that's all they do, we've always had code officers out seven days a week, and this is one of their tasks, seven days a week, so it's not just on weekends we pick up signs that are placed on city property, we do it seven, seven days a week, just a few clarifications, I thought would be helpful.
Status report on the Seminole Woods Parkway?
Path.
Path.
The, far as I, last I heard last week, we were still on track, we are concerned about the, the polls delaying it, but it's good to hear that FPNL is out there, it is going quite well and on schedule, in fact, we might be a little ahead of schedule, is, you know, the good news.
Wouldn't be the first time we've been delayed by FPL, probably won't be the last, but they have their issues to deal with, just as we do.
It's the same cruise that when you're out, when, when your electricity goes out, they, guess who, guess which one they, they take care of first, they're going to get your power back on first before they, they deal with moving poles and things, that's rightfully so.
Who can answer Mr. Carroll's questions, you need a permit to plant his 10 trees?
He doesn't, I, I, Nesterin lets you tell me differently, he doesn't need a, a permit to plant the 10 trees, I, I would be careful about planting 10 trees and where you plant those 10 trees.
Don't plant them in the swale.
If you need help, make sure they're on your property, not city property, you know, they don't get into utility lines, underground, overhead, all those things, we have people that can help you with that.
Well, that's, that's what I wanted to comment on, with 10 trees, he may want to take advantage of our service and have one of our tree professionals come out there and, and talk to him about shade and proper location, and so, he can take, no permit, but he can certainly take advantage of our, our expertise.
But the converse is not true, once you've planted the trees, or they're established, you would need a permit to take them down.
Yes.
I won't be around, but.
Jack, I hope you're wrong, all right, so much for the public comment, I hope we've answered everybody's questions, discussion by city council of matters not on the agenda, Mr. Ferguson, Mr. Maguire, we'll start with you.
Nothing to offer, Your Honor.
Mr. Lewis?
Mr. Maguire has nothing to say.
Sorry about that, discussion by city attorney of matters not on the agenda.
Nothing to add, Mr. Mayor.
Discussion by city manager of matters not on the agenda.
Just a couple of other projects that is going to have an impact on people, we're, if you drive by the high school, Bulldog Drive, State Road 100, you see they're working, as usual, I've already got my first complaint, we'll get more complaints, because it's, it, we, starting next Monday, we'll be blocking Bulldog Drive off to through traffic, we will provide access for any of the businesses, we have a resident there, and, and also the school, but you won't be able to drive through from, to Central Park, and then the first week in March is when they officially start construction on Palm Coast Parkway, you're seeing some surveying, some things happening, but come the first week in March is when I think you'll start seeing some serious work on Palm Coast Parkway, that one is a two-year project, and a lot of activities, I want to stress that we actually will designate a dedicated website, we'll have a hotline, 800 number of people can call to try to, to help businesses if they have questions or issues, or residents that need, need certain things to be addressed, so. So we realize that that one's going to be real inconvenient. And sometimes, you know, the motorists can help us with issues if they let us know, and we'll have people that will attempt to address them. Mayor, that's all I have.
Just a reminder, if you'd have Kendra share that letter with council, the issue on the veterans grants. Mr. Vice Mayor?
I move adjourned.
We are adjourned, thank you. We are adjourned. We are, we are. We made it before ten.